I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting tonight. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Malcolm Light of the Orchard Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Would you all bow in prayer with me? Almighty and triune God, we give you thanks and praise for all of your mighty works. You are loving and good and gracious. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with other people. We thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, churches, the families and the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. But Lord, we also acknowledge that we do not deserve these good gifts. We are not worthy of your favor. We have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed, and we do these things that we should not do, and we don't do the things that we should do. We have not loved you with our whole heart. We have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. And so we appeal to the Lamb of God, the Lord Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. Forgive us and give us hearts obedience to your holy scriptures. Thank you that Jesus rose from the dead and now reigns as king over heaven and earth. I pray that you would grant that our city would be known as a righteous city, a city that confesses Jesus as Lord, a city of peace and hope, a city with happy homes, a city that welcomes the stranger, a city that cares for the needy, a city that defends the innocent from those who would do evil. And Lord, I thank you as well for civil government. Those who bear the sword do so as your ministers, to be a terror to crime. I pray that our civil servants would acknowledge this calling, that they would perform it faithfully. Be with our judges, our attorneys, our firefighters and law enforcement. Grant that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but that they would stand firm for truth and justice. Keep them safe, I pray, from harm as they serve our community. And I pray for this city council. Give them council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items that are before them this evening. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. I pray this in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Malcolm. Today's Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. I have to call this city council meeting to order. Abby, would you please take a roll call?
Councilmember Sylve?
Present.
Councilmember Bessel Jr.?
Here.
Councilmember North?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Palomar?
Here.
Next, we approve the agenda. Action by the council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries.
Were we supposed to pull something?
We're gonna pull something that I can say.
Okay.
Tonight, next, uh, next we have presentations. Tonight, we have none. Moving on to the agenda, it's public comment. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anybody tonight that would like to address our city council? Come on up, please. Uh, state your name and if you're a citizen of Keenborough.
Okay. My name is Janet Cabrelle, and I'm a member of the Riverbend Church, which is located in the Kingsburg Historical Park. The reason I'm here tonight is to request a crosswalk from the Historical Park to the new senior housing across the street from, from the park. A couple of our members who live in the senior housing that cross to attend the church. One is a 95-year-old gentleman in a wheelchair. Traffic flies down the road, making it difficult for him to cross. And the only crosswalk from 18th going east is on 19th and 20th Avenue. So it'd be a long ways for him to go the opposite way and then come back to go to his home. So I'd like your council to see if a crosswalk could be added in front of the park. That's what my request is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janet.
So I believe we are putting a crosswalk at Madsen and Sierra, uh, right next to Linnea Village.
Okay. Is that something that's coming up soon?
Um...
I'd like to approve today. Permanence being issued tomorrow.
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Nice.
How's that?
That's fast service.
That's how we roll here.
Yeah.
Alright, let's adjourn.
Do we have anybody else here tonight that would like to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, okay, I will close public comment. Next, we have consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital reading ordinances by titles only, and adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have 5.1 through 5.6. Do we have any members that would like to, councilmember, like to pull an agenda item?
Yeah, I'd request that we pull 5.5. It's incomplete and remove it from the agenda completely.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, 5.5 is pulled. Then I need a motion to approve 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, we have regular calendar. 6.1, Public Hearing. Approval of Facility Solutions Agreement and Project Exemption SEQA, Government Code Section 4217.10-4217.18 for the City Solar Project. Staff report by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez. And Daniel Wells. Present this tonight. It's sponsored by Public Works Department. I would like to open the public hearing.
We've got a different mic. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, city staff is here again today to discuss the agreement and moving forward with the proposed projects at Wells 1316 Police Department and City Yard. As we've discussed in previous city council meetings, the city is working with SiteLogic to install those facilities. There is, uh, there was some issues regarding some of the financing, and at a previous council meeting, council gave direction to the Oppenheimer Group to solicit financing options. They will be presenting those subsequent to this, or to approval of the agreement for the solar project. Part of the conditions for obtaining financing is to have a contract in place for construction of the solar sites. The staff is here to recommend approval of both resolutions, both 23-40 and 23-41, one being the SEQA for the solar project and the other being the Energy Service Agreement between the city and SiteLogic. The agreement still is in a draft form. There is a couple of items that are still needing to get finalized, but I don't foresee those being any kind of hindrance in, in moving forward with the project. Just with the timing of the way that those were negotiated, like I said, there's still some items that we need to finish up regarding liability insurance, but like I said, I don't think that those are anything that, that will hold the project up. So, uh, happy to answer any questions or discuss any aspects of the project. We also have representatives from SiteLogic here today.
Thank you, Daniel. Council discussion or questions for Daniel?
I have a couple of questions about Wells 16 site. If this is the right time to talk about how the design is for it?
Okay.
I just want to make sure that where those panels are for Site 16, Abby, if you could pull up that specific one. Uh, you're right there. Right there. So all of those panels will be grouped in that one section up against that alley fence, correct?
Correct.
Do they know that on some of the renderings, it looked like they might be elsewhere also? I just want to make sure they're all there.
Yeah, those, those are all there.
Okay, and the other question is fence lines, that they're gonna be below the fence lines. I know that's what we originally discussed. It's just hard to tell in those renderings. I just need to kind of nail that down. That's one of the questions.
So those will be in the fence lines, and then also in the agreement, the city will be taking responsibility for doing the coverings in the middle fence and also the landscaping on, on the Scanson side to mitigate any of the, the views of those solar panels, so.
Is your intent to get that landscaping done prior to?
Prior to the construction.
That's one of my concerns, is that we're gonna have these up and the panels are gonna go up and then we're gonna plant little tiny bushes that are gonna actually cover it. I want those to be covered prior to those going in.
So, yeah, so depending, like I said, we still have some time before, if, if it gets approved, we have some time before construction would start, so we would begin to, to work on those mitigating issues to, to avoid those views.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I think that's, that's the thing that I'm hearing from constituents there is, you know, that they're still not thrilled with it. I think they understand the financial aspects of it, but I do need to be able to guarantee that their concern is that these are gonna be covered. So, just in good faith, I need to pass that along.
Definitely.
Any other questions from council? No discussion? Okay. I'd like to open up the public comment, this public hearing. Does anybody here have any comments or questions for Public Works? Okay. Hearing none, we will close public comment. Continue council discussion on this item, agenda item.
I have a lot to say.
Okay.
And what we're approving in this first part is to enter into the agreement with SiteLogic, correct? As part of this?
Yeah, so the, uh, so there's two actions. One's the SEQA, and the other one's to authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement once everything's been finalized with the review from our city attorney and our city manager.
Okay. So, um, like with a council discussion, I, um, I've done some homework on this between our last time and this time, a lot more. And, and I've been a pretty, like, strong no the last couple times. But those reasons were, I was concerned about some things with SiteLogic. Kind of feeling like the, like bait and switch situation, um, feeling like that. And the rush, and then the, the other reason was because of the well at Earling Park. Those are really my reasons for no. But really reflecting on this project a lot, talking to staff, and I also went and talked to some former customers of SiteLogic, because I was concerned about making sure that we were gonna be involved with a reputable company because of what happened. And the push for all of this, like after reflecting on it, is not on SiteLogic. That was on our staff. I mean, that was like with the deadline coming up and all of that. So it was unfair for me to lump it in with SiteLogic. That was not on them. And talking to former customers of theirs, they have nothing but a stellar reputation. And so it looks like what happened here with us, where it felt like, to me, something that was presented was then all of a sudden blindsided by something totally different and a lot more money, that that was really out of their hands, and an unfortunate occurrence where, and talking to another customer who's used them many times, that was never their experience, and they, they've been a trustworthy company. So to me, that reason of being a no is off the table anymore. I'm not worried about SiteLogic. I feel like they would be a good partner in, like, outside the, the situation that we've incurred. Like, their reputation now is speaking for itself with others, and so I, I feel like I can trust that. And I'm still not happy about Earling Park, but in looking at where we're at now and where the economy, where the future is going, especially with PG&E hikes, I think that if we don't do this, it's optional right now. I could also see our state not making it an optional choice later to go solar, where we might not have these benefits that we're, we have now. So I really think that if I voted no again to, for this project, that in the long run, I might regret that, because I think that the cost savings to the city and in the future to our citizens would, it would end up being detrimental if we didn't move forward with the project. And I think not approving it tonight, in my opinion, um, we could chance that. So I know that I haven't been a proponent. I'm still not happy about Earling Park, but I think the benefit to our community really needs to be weighed in here. And so from the last vote to this vote, I, I have changed my mind on that. So just heading into this discussion, I wanted you to know my thoughts, and I think that, um, I think SiteLogic would be a good company to partner with.
Any other comments from council?
I have some, just to piggyback off of what Laura said. I agree with most everything Laura said. I think the problem for me was the fact that, you know, it was presented one way and then, and then it was different. So one term of the deal, which was a substantial, you know, part of the deal going from the 1% to the 4.7% is a lot of money, and that was my biggest problem in the fact that we didn't have several different, we hitched our cart to SiteLogic, and I understand why. But we didn't bid it like we do most other projects. So we really didn't get three different bids. We hitched it to SiteLogic, which is what we kind of did and had to do to get in our application in. But I, my, my problem is that we didn't do that, and I understand, and I don't want to create more work for staff, but I, I just wish we would have had three competitive bids and did it the way we do with everything else, you know, bathrooms, all, all the things that we do for the city, um, construction. So that was my biggest issue, that the term of the deal changed, and then we're still basically going down the same road with the same company. And it's not to say that they're not a reputable company. I think they fully are. I think they were probably a big victim of circumstance when that happened, but nevertheless, it was, you know, it, it rubbed me the wrong way, and I was just like, hey, listen, we should probably bid this out and see what other companies can do it for as well. It's just how I feel.
Thank you, Dave.
So my view of SiteLogic is I'm still mad at you guys about the whole thing, if I'm being honest. But it, it doesn't really matter. This isn't an emotional decision for me. This is really about, it, it just makes financial sense, and I think if we stop and go through another company at this point, it's gonna cost more money. So, you know, put my motions and fill in the bait and switch aside, it, it's just a financial thing for me. I, I still, I, I agree with Councilmember North. I don't like Earling Parks, though. I think that it's so much better than it was. Having that public hearing where we had everybody come in and having the neighbors that lived there come up with this design, this is designed by them. And, you know, they, they very, very much compromised, I think, once they understood the financial impacts of the whole city. So, like, for one, I just want to thank everybody that came up to those meetings, and I continually get emails about it. I, there's a lot of understanding from that neighborhood, and I'm thankful for that. But from here going forward, the two things I want to say is, one, there's gonna be a lot of emphasis on Public Works to getting this done right. And, you know, Daniel, you're really gonna be held accountable for that. And I want to be right up front about that. And with SiteLogic, you're gonna be held accountable for any small deviation from exactly what you've promised is gonna be tragic for you. It, it will be. You're gonna have to stick to everything that you've said, timelines, the way it's gonna look, the artist's rendering and everything. It has to be right. These are, these are people's neighborhood, and they've, they've come out, and my kids play there, the whole neighborhood's kids play there, and we're gonna take it seriously. So I'm gonna still be supportive cautiously. So please, uh, please don't let us down.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other comments? Laura, thank you for doing your homework.
Can I just ask that you put the microphones closer to your mouth? It's a little bit hard to hear.
Is it okay?
I know parts, it's my problem, and I don't know if you can adjust the volume.
Probably, if we move it closer, probably, does, does that help? Yeah. Move closer to us, okay.
Is it everyone, Chris, or just?
It's, it's mostly, uh, well, Stacy doesn't say anything. Laura, it's somewhat, somewhat, you, because you move around.
I think it's 'cause you have it far away from you, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is closer.
So, sorry.
'Cause these are quite a bit louder than our other microphones. Just gotta move them closer, yes.
Sorry.
You accept all criticisms?
Yes. Well, I, I know for me on this agenda item, it's been controversial with, from the get-go, but I'm glad that we did have those public hearings, and I don't live near Earling Park, and, but I think that, that, that's a good solution that, but I agree with Brandon when he says that the specs have to be right on the money with the height of it. That's the, the main spec is for the citizens of Keenborough is that height, the residents in that area, so. If it's done, if it's done right, we'll keep everybody happy. Okay, so, continue council discussion? Uh, I closed the, closed the, any, any other comments from the public on this before I close public hearing? No, okay, I'll close public hearing, then. Next is, we need to vote on Adopt Resolution 2023-40. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have to adopt Resolution 2023-41. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carry, both motions carry. Thank you. 6.2, Solar Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement with Flagstar Public Funding Corporation. Staff report by Michael Garcia, Brandis, and Tillman. Presentation by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez.
So this is part two of this portion. So we do have the Oppenheimer Group here to discuss the financing piece of the, um, solar project. Um, like I said, we, we did get some good news, and I think they can further kind of elaborate on kind of that, that situation. I know we were anticipating a certain interest rate. We did get a lower interest rate, but part of that financing, I think they can talk a little bit and answer some questions of the specifics in terms of the term. I think it's a 20-year term, but there's, there's some provisions there after 15 years. I think that the project still pencils out well, but with that, I'll, I'll pass it over to Nikki and Michael.
Alright. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Garcia with Oppenheimer and Company, and today I want to begin this presentation by providing a brief market update. So as you can see in the chart and table here, interest rates have really been on the rise over the past couple months. Since the beginning of August, we've seen interest rates rise by over 80 basis points, which is pretty substantial. This is largely driven by economic data on inflation and actions taken by the Federal Reserve. At their most recent meeting in September, the Federal Reserve did vote to leave interest rates unchanged, which was expected, but what wasn't expected was their revised monetary outlook. It was much more hawkish than anticipated. They're expecting to raise rates further this year, and they also reduced expectations for lowering rates next year. So this is very much against investor hopes and expectations, and as a result, we've seen interest rates rise quite a bit. Since that meeting, we've seen them rise by over 40 basis points. And the next Federal Reserve Board meeting will be held at the end of this month on October 31st. So at the prior council meeting, we were directed to begin discussions with prospective lenders to provide term sheets for the city's solar financing project. And so since then, we reached out to, um, three to four different prospective banks, and we were able to secure three proposals. We have them laid here in a summary. And as you can see, we were able to receive proposals from Capital One, Flagstar Bank, and Webster Bank. The proposals from Capital One and Webster were contingent on a real property lease, meaning they were asking the city to secure the financing with, you know, maybe a city hall or, or fire station. Whereas Flagstar Bank's proposal only required an equipment lease. They are comfortable with the equipment itself, securing the financing. And for that reason, city staff directed us to move forward with Flagstar Bank. So just kind of walk, walking through the summary, they provided an interest rate of 4.77%, slightly lower than what we presented at the prior council meeting. And most importantly, that interest rate is locked through October 15th, 20, uh, October 15th. And what that does is that protects the city from any interest rate volatility. And so I just wanted to highlight a couple things. We received this proposal on September 15th prior to that Fed meeting. You know, we, we had an eye on that, and we wanted to get the term sheets before then, just in case, you know, any surprises, and, and it paid off. As I mentioned before, interest rates since have risen by 40 basis points. So the city's really benefited from, from that rate lock. Down below, we have a summary of the prepayment provisions. With Flagstar's proposal, the city will be allowed to pay off the loan early with a 1.5% prepayment premium, beginning at the close of financing through the first six years. And that prepayment penalty declines, so after eight years, there's no longer a prepayment penalty. Are there any questions so far?
What does it decline over here? You said the first eight years?
Yeah, so beginning at closing, there's a 1.5% prepayment penalty. We kind of have them up here.
Oh, okay, see.
So then, beginning May 1st, 2030, it declines to 1% prepayment. And then the year after that, a half a percent. And then it's, declines to zero, to no prepayment.
Is that also applicable if there's a financing restructure?
Yes. So here, we just wanted to present a summary of the financing results based on the Flagstar proposal. The par amount or borrowing amount is $3,274,000. We also included here the city's estimated cash contribution to the project. So together, that produces a project and contingency fund of about $3.5 million. The financing also includes capitalized interest, so this, this fund will make the first three interest payments for the city. The cost of issuance has been refined down to $60,077. Again, the interest rate of 4.77%. And based on that interest rate, the average fiscal year debt service comes out to a little over 200,000. And based on that interest rate, the average fiscal year debt service comes out to a little over two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year with total gross debt service of five million two hundred and seven thousand. And one thing we did wanna point out, um, Webster Bank did have a slightly lower rate on their quote, right? So we did the math on that and that proposal would save the city a little over twelve hundred dollars per year. Albeit at the cost of securing real property, um, of equal or greater value, um, to the, the financing amount. So we just wanted to point that out. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Michael?
Oh, yeah. No questions? And I'll let Nikki Tallman discuss further on the financing structure.
Good evening, I'm Nikki Tallman, good to see you again. Um, just very briefly, uh, we wanted to point out the fifteen year term from Flagstar has a twenty year amortization. Uh, but at year fifteen, it will be required to be paid off or refinanced at that time. Um, the capitalized interest fund that Michael touched on, we're funding the first three periods of debt service. That allows the project to get in place, up and running, and you to receive savings from the project to begin making your debt service payments. There's an escrow account for both the project fund and for the capitalized interest fund. And that escrow account will earn interest and that interest will accrue to your benefit in that account. And that's the account where you'll pay for the cost of the project and the first three debt service payments that come due. Um, the equipment lease is the document that really lays out the terms of the financing. And again, it's um, in the finance world, it's relatively simple. Um, the equipment is the asset for the lease. And there's no requirement for um, a city-owned asset like a, a real property asset, a city hall or fire station to secure the lease. It also will state the prepayment provisions that we've gone over, list your payment dates and what the debt service is. It's in your packet to be approved as to form, so there are some blanks that we have to fill in. Now, if you approve, you know, every, the rate's locked, it will not change, but um, we'll fill in the dates and that kind of thing. But it's approved, all of the material points are in there. Um, and then the escrow agreement, um, the last document, again, this is the agreement that will drive that escrow account, which is where the project fund and the capitalized interest fund will be held. And it will earn interest to accrue into that account. That's really a summary of the documents, and do you have any questions on the documents or the escrow agreement? Um, here's the financing schedule, um, today we're at October fourth, council meeting uh, to consider the transaction, if approved, we will work with staff to fill in the final um, dates and so forth in the agreements. Uh, work to have them signed by all parties and close the transaction by the twelfth of October, so that we're within that rate lock period. Which we're very happy about, that we got that locked, um. Any questions?
Those fill in the blanks though, can we authorize this? Can we authorize city manager to just, once we've approved, to just go through and fill those out as even appropriate?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking us to do?
Yes, and we'll, we'll work with-
They come back to us again?
Correct. We'll work with staff to, and the bonded council to fill them in.
Okay.
We have any questions or comments from the public? No, okay. Any more discussion or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we need to make a motion, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four two approving an equipment lease purchase agreement with Flagstar Public Funding Corporation. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have six point three. Transient oriented development project Draper Street, report by city engineer Dave Peters, presentation by Dave Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Did you see the arrows?
Okay.
So just a, a quick uh, refresher on this project, um, we uh, received a, a grant from Fresno Cog a few years ago to prepare a transit oriented development uh, plan for the downtown area, it was transportation oriented. It uh, developed strategies to promote pedestrian and non-motorized travel in the downtown area. That plan was circulated to, seems like every interest group in the city, they gave, they gave us comments, we revised the plan, submitted to the council and it was adopted. To follow up on that, we submitted a uh, a follow-up grant through the same program at Cog and um, we were uh, awarded uh, nearly four hundred thousand dollars to do a phase one implementation. Uh, project of that plan, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about that. The plan, uh, talked about doing a variety of things, but I've highlighted some of them that are included in the phase one plan, improving opportunities to remove barriers for pedestrian travel. Providing opportunities for bicyclists and introducing non-motorized travel options. So, the project that we submitted um, was to um, install bike lanes on Draper Street. As well as construct curb extensions on Lewis Street at Marion, Smith, Lincoln and Washington. So just, real quick on the curb extensions, won't spend a lot of time on those, but uh, they'll be similar in fashion to the ones on Draper. Um, and this is just a graphic that kinda depicts what they are trying to do, it, they um, shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians, they also put pedestrians um, at, at a uh, at a point where they're more visible to vehicles traveling down the street, so overall improve safety. Um, and facilitates pedestrian travel through those intersections. What I wanna spend time on tonight is the alternatives for the bike lane on Draper Street, and this is Kevlar, so I'm good. I'm feeling good. Um, and just to uh, kind of r- remove a lot of the mystery, this is the option that we are, that we are recommending, so this is um, this is actually a graphic out of the, out of a uh, it's an excerpt out of the Federal Highway Administration guidelines on putting bike lanes on streets, so this is one of the options that, that they recommend, it's, it's a it's an option that we installed on Lewis Street back in two thousand and eight, I think it's been pretty successful. So essentially, it's just re- uh, maintaining the diagonal parking on the street and putting right behind the diagonal parking a bike lane, and then you have your travel lane, so we're able to do that because the streets in downtown are extremely wide. And I'll just mention, the curb to curb width on Lewis Street is uh, about ten feet less than what it is on Draper Street, so we even have more room to do this sort of configuration on, on Draper Street. But again, this is um, uh, this is a configuration that we've placed uh, on Lewis Street, so essentially um, you know, the, the bike lane's crossed by the park cars when they park and, and it's crossed when they back up. Uh, but it's been overall really successful. Another option that a lot of jurisdictions are uh, moving towards is similar to what I just described, except for it's back in angle parking. So there's a lot of documentation on this configuration, but the main advantage that are in the publications are that when you pull out, you're facing forward and you can see the bicyclists in the bike lane. And, and the point is, you know, that could potentially be a little safer. However, what it fails to mention is that you're crossing the bike lane backing up when you're parking. So, so you know, I've turned it over a lot, I've talked to other engineers in other jurisdictions and we're really having a hard time pinpointing you know, why it's safer to back across that bike lane when you're parking than backing across the bike lane when you're pulling out. The bike, the bicyclists in the bike lane, we'll be able to see either of those two movements. And then the other challenge that's not mentioned a lot here, um, but we probably have all experienced it, particularly with parallel parking is you'll pass the stall and when you go to back in, somebody's right there and they won't let you back up, so um, you really don't have that when you pull in headfirst, so. For, for those reasons, we're not real excited about, about this option, this just kinda shows what it kinda looks like in a corridor and, and what the, you know, what the steps would be to, to, to back in there. Another option is uh, placing the sharos, so that's a wordplay on shared and arrow, um, essentially what it means is that the bike lanes and the vehicles share the lane. We've got about twenty-four feet between the center line of the road and the back of the parking stalls, so there's enough room for them to, to share space. However, the vehicle code allows for that right now. You know, vehicles are supposed to uh, share space with, with bicyclists. Uh, and so really, this is just a little bit of added reminder for drivers and bicyclists that they're sharing the lane, but I don't know that it really provides a whole lot more safety uh, than, than, than what they're allowed to do now. Uh, another option would be going to parallel parking, but I'm not gonna spend any time on that, cause it would cut our parking down by about two thirds in downtown, so I don't think we wanna do that, just wanted to bring it up that it, we, we thought about it, we thought about everything. So, the last option is um, is interesting, but uh, there's, there's a few reasons we didn't choose it. Uh, this puts the bike lane between the curb and the parallel parking, so you can see this would be the curb, sidewalk would be over here, shops here, be a little delineators. Bumpers for the cars so they don't get into the, the, the bike lane. Few reasons why we didn't choose this, one, we think it's a little cumbersome for the bicyclists, it would require wheel stops at every parking stall, which would be added maintenance for our public works department, and then you're gonna have that pedestrian traffic crossing the bike lane, going to and from the sidewalk, from the cars to the sidewalk and from the sidewalks to the cars. Um, versus if the bike lanes in the street, those, the bicyclists are, are generally unimpaired with, you know, um, cause they would be given the right of way for any cars backing out of, of a parking stall, so. A few disadvantages to this, I guess the advantage would be getting the, the bicyclists, bicyclists up, up against the side of, of the street. Um, but they would also have to, part of the bike lane would have to, have to include the gutter pan, which isn't desirable for bicyclists. It's a little, it's a little bit more of a, a sharper slope there, so. A few reasons why we didn't, we didn't choose this, but, but something that we did, we did consider. Um, and lastly, I just wanna talk about colored bike lanes, so there, there's a, there's a few um, advantages of painting the bike lanes a contrasting color to the pavement, in, in most cases, that color's green. Um, it better defines the road space for the bicycle users, uh, creates appearance of narrow or pavement for auto drivers, so that will um, help to calm traffic along the corridor or along the street, uh, which will reduce in slower speeds and less accidents, um, however, it does require a little bit more maintenance, but I've talked to my friend in Public Works and he's assured me it's something that we can handle as part of our, our annual um, street restriping program, so we are recommending that those bike lanes be installed and um, with a uh, a contrasting color. Probably green. This would be the cross section of, of what those bike lanes would look like. Um, there's fourteen feet, because the, the car's parked at a, at a forty-five degree angle, so it doesn't quite need the full twenty foot stall. Um, but it has a twenty foot stall, but it doesn't stick out perpendicular to the curb twenty feet. Um, so that's the fourteen feet you see, five foot bike lane, there's a nineteen foot travel lane. Um, so that, that would allow for that bike lane to be maybe even a little wider, um, maybe six feet, but we're still, we're still considering that in the design. Um, so it, it fits well, and like I said, this is the same configuration that we're doing on Lewis Street, so I think it would be um, very successful and very safe for, for bicyclists. And this is what it would look like in plan view, um, like I said, you've got that diagonal parking that currently exists, travel lane in this direction and then the, the colored bike lanes. The hatch striping at the intersections allows for vehicles to kinda sneak into that bike lane. Tells the bicyclists that they, they may be sharing space with a, a vehicle, very similar to what you see on most bike lanes intersections. And then uh, Daniel and I have talked about the Christmas tree being located in the middle of Draper Street between Marion and Smith, and so we may stripe the bike lane ha- hatch it where the Christmas tree's gonna go to, just so that if cars gotta go around the Christmas tree, they can, they can do that when it's, when it's, uh, when it's installed there, so. That's our recommendation, um, for how the design would be scheduled, um, planning on completing the, the final design in January, bidding and awarding it in February, and then the project would be complete by May, just in time for summer, so. With that, I could answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council?
So are you changing the degree of the parking?
No, no, it would stay the same. Yeah. Yeah, the parking would essentially stay the same, it's just, would have that bike lane behind it, so. Luckily, we have a lot of width on, on Draper Street, like I said, Draper Street's about ten foot wider than Lewis.
I think it's important and it's important to do it quickly because the popularity of um, our school age kids and especially those little electric scooters and bikes that they're on. And they're all coming downtown like in droves and they're on the sidewalk and it's not safe.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, there's no loss of any parking spaces.
No, sorry.
This, this, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I should, I should mention too, the project involves uh, doing some pavement maintenance, so we're considering like a cape seal similar to what we did over at Marion, so we'll kinda rehab the pavement before we do all of this restriping, so we won't have to, we won't have to deal with the, the pavement maintenance for a while.
So, we're obviously not making the street any bigger, we're taking that bike lane space from the parking stalls or from the normal right of way driveway now?
Yeah, from the normal, from the normal travel lane that's there now, yeah. Like I said, there's, there's seventy-six feet of curb to curb space, there's uh, there's about twenty-four tw- twenty-four feet from the center line of the stripe to the back of the parking stall stripe right now, so we would put a bike lane there, still leaving nineteen feet for, through traffic.
So I, I guess my, I have, I have a couple of questions about it, Chief David, some of this is gonna be addressed towards you. For downtown, have we had issues with bicycle accidents, uh, pedestrians versus bicycles, bicycles versus vehicles?
No.
Uh, so I guess my question is, is i- is this something we have to do, because I'm just super cautious anytime we talk about changing anything on Draper.
Yeah.
Because it, it is our brand, it's our brand street, so I'm just curious if this is something that we have to do or?
Yeah, it was, it's something that was contemplated in the plan that the council approved, it's definitely uh, you know, I think a statewide, countywide and citywide goal to, to kinda promote these non-motorized um, types of travel. Um, it, it, it's definitely infrastructure that we would need to support, a lot of the other things that are in the plan, like the, the uh, shared mobility stuff, the e-bikes and everything. Um, and typically, what I've found is when we've built the pedestrian facilities like the Madsen Bike Path, like the uh, Golden State Bike Path, believe it or not. Um, you get more users than you would have had if you, if you, you know, if you hadn't have built the facilities to support them, if that makes any sense, so. So I think you're, you'll see more bicyclists probably, because now they have a designated spot to ride, they're more comfortable doing it.
And I guess that, that's almost where a little bit of my issue is, is I feel like it's gonna draw cyclists. And I guess that, that's almost where a little bit of my issue is, is I feel like it's going to draw cyclists down Draper, where I would probably prefer that, we want people to get off their bike and walk Draper. So if they go into our stores and stuff, I don't really need it to turn into our thoroughfare for cycling. We have bike paths and things for that around town. I guess that's, that's my only real angst with it is we're going to have more cyclists downtown because of it.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, we talked about this, I think, when the plan came through and, you know, right now, I think we have, you know, at least it's been my experience, the long time that I've been here, you know, especially twenty years ago, very vehicle-driven type approach to going to downtown. So much though, that you might get in your car and move it three times to get from one end of Draper to the other. So what we're trying to do is get people, you know, using tho- those other modes. So, you know, if you're not, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to move your car three or four times, you know, you, you're not, you're obviously not comfortable walking that. But if there's bike facilities, you may be comfortable biking it. So it's just, it's a long, a lot of distance to cover. And so that's why we're trying to offer that option. But I, also definitely putting emphasis on pedestrian facilities as well, which is why the other component of the grant is, is attacking those, those curb extensions on Lewis Street.
And I'm, and I'm really supportive of bike lanes. I just don't, I don't know that I'm supportive of them on Draper specifically. I mean, that is a little bit of hallowed ground for us. But that being said, I think what council member North said about the e-bikes is very serious. I mean, there is a lot of kids coming down here that probably shouldn't, probably shouldn't be on the sidewalks in the first place. But I, I do feel it's, it's a safe, it's a fairly safe street now for cyclists. They just have to maintain the exact same laws as vehicles. And I think that's going to be part of the, part of the issue that I'm afraid of is drawing more downtown cyclists. And myself being guilty of it and being a cyclist, we have a tendency to not follow all of the rules of the road. And I fear what that looks like in our downtown.
Yeah, and, and you could do something like this, is what we talked about. I mean, this is essentially what they're allowed to do now. They're allowed to, to share that lane by the vehicle code. We could put those shareos down to kind of let everybody know, hey, bicyclists and vehicles are sharing the lane. They're just not statistically, I think, as safe as if you're able to get a designated bike lane. The safest thing would be a separated class one lane, but obviously we can't do that. So the next best then would be the, the class two bike lane. And I think, you know, having it, being a contrasting color and clearly marked with all the symbols. I think people are going to be more protected by that. I think everybody's going to be aware that, hey, that's a bike lane. Versus these, I think they can get overlooked, I think they're, it's better than nothing. But, and that's kind of what we have now with nothing. So this is better than nothing, but I don't think this is near as good as having a bike lane, just my opinion.
The amount of students, I'm out pretty often driving like school to school and through downtown when school gets out. And the amount, I mean, it's groups of anywhere from five to fifteen kids that are coming and multiple groups. I don't necessarily see the traffic in the morning and I see them on the sidewalks. And I don't know that it's intentional to break our rules of not being on the sidewalk or I don't know where I'm okay to ride. Do I ride in the street behind cars? I don't know if I'm going to get in trouble with that. I don't know their thinking, but they're not using that without a lane. I think that if, if we are having these lanes and the other, like the long-term plan is to encourage people to ride a bike or if we end up putting where they can rent scooters or things like that later in to come to downtown. And we also need to consider that we need to have bike racks.
Right.
Because if we're having these bike lanes, we're having, we're saying come downtown and then they're going into, I mean, it's Casaros Pelicans, many of these other things for our younger kids. Then where are the bikes going to go?
Yeah, and that's in the plan too, it's not part of this first phase, but there definitely is.
I think it needs to coincide very closely because then we're providing like, hey, come down here and here's how and here's where it's accepted to ride, not on the sidewalk.
Right.
But then what with all of those bikes?
And, and I think we, I think we'll get there. I think the, the, a lot of the, the agencies that issue grants, they really like to see that their grant money is used to develop a plan and then that the grant money is doing all these subsequent projects that are implementing the plan. So I just think every time we go back to them and say, hey, we did phase one, we've completed it, we want to do phase two. I think we just have a better chance to keep kind of going along. But yeah, that's an important, important aspect.
Dave, have, did you say that these bike lanes went in front of other committees here in Kingsburg?
Yeah, this was in the, the plan that was approved by council, went to the BID, the, the depot group, Public Safety Committee, Planning Commission, Community Services Commission, I believe. Yeah, it was a couple of years ago.
It's been quite a while ago?
Yeah.
About two years.
Yeah, eighteen miles, two years, two, two years ago, I don't know exactly, but. Yeah.
And all the, all the committees approved it? Because I don't remember.
Yeah, yeah, this was, I mean, this, this definitely had the support, yeah.
It was, I think that when it came, it was more like also input to get to this point. It wasn't, here's, here's the plan.
Right, yeah.
And when it was brought to council, we gave Dave input and direction and, and concerns and ideas. That's why I think he sent the Kevlar.
And I think the thought process is, okay, do we want bicyclists, pedestrians, strollers and everything on the sidewalk? Probably not, right? We probably want to take the bicyclists, the e-scooters and put them in the street. So if we're going to put them in the street, how do we want to do that? You know, you can just do nothing and, you know, and have it, have it like it is now, which I don't know is the most inviting, you know, way to do it or the most safe way to do it. And then, you know, when you look at what you're going to do, it's, it's these options that we've presented tonight. So like I said, I think the, the most safe option, you know, just to kind of run down some of the advantages of the bike lane again, we're going to narrow that, that twenty-four feet of pavement down, not down to twelve, but down to nineteen. It is going to, is, is going to visually narrow that street. It's going to, it's going to have a traffic calming effect, we found it out. I don't, I don't know if you guys remember, but I would say about two thousand and ten, we put bike lanes on Tulare Street and I think we measured before and after and I think it lowered the speeds like six, seven miles per hour, just by striping the bike lanes on Tulare Street. So I think we'll get a similar effect here. It's just, it'll visually narrow the street, we'll get the traffic calming effect. You'll have the, the, you know, the contrasting color bike lane. It's going to let the, the parking, the people that are parked know, hey, I need to look before I back out because I've got a bike lane there. It's going to let bike, bike lane, bike, bicyclists know, this is where I'm supposed to be. It's going to let people driving on the road know, hey, bikes are going to be there, I need, I need to watch out. I think this is the safest way to accommodate those bicyclists on Draper Street. I know it's a big change, I do. I, trust me, I've been here a long time too, I get it, I know it's a big change. But, but when you just look through all the options in terms of, you know, you know, what, what's blending with what we've had for a very long time the most? What's the most safe? What's going to accommodate those users the best? It's, it's probably this option, you know? It's not, hey, let's flip around and have everybody back in, you know, because I think that's just too disruptive. And we really considered all of those things when we were looking at these options.
And it's, to me, it's kind of the safest, least amount of change we could do.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it.
Arrow things, which I don't think are going to do anything.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, there, if, if, if you were going to do nothing or those, I would say, well, go ahead and do those, but. Yeah, I agree, I think it's a, a very incremental benefit.
On Lewis Street where we have the bike lane behind the parking, that picture right there?
Yeah.
Have we had any issues with bicyclists getting hit or with, because that's pretty much the model of what we'd be doing without the painting?
So I did that design and, and nobody's brought it up to me and I'm usually the first person they'd bring it up to if there was a problem, since I did it. But I don't know, Chief, are you aware of it? And I have seen over the years, those bicy, bike lanes be, because again, I think we put those bike lanes in as part of a pavement rehab project. It probably got us more points or something at some point. But then going back and looking, I was surprised at how much they were, they were used. So.
Are we going to redo those on Lewis Street and have them use the colored bike lane as well or not?
I was not proposing to do that now because it's not part of the grant application, but yeah, I mean, if we do Draper and everybody falls in love with it, then we could consider doing that in the future. And, and when you go to different towns, you're going to, you see this con, this contrasting bike lane color everywhere.
It looks sharp.
Everybody's doing it, yeah. Some do it just in conflict points and then some do it everywhere. I just think in this case, it's, it, it makes sense to do it everywhere because with all the parking stalls, there's conflict points everywhere, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to, a little bit more information. So thankfully, we haven't had a lot of accidents downtown, but we do get a lot of complaints from the business owners because of the scooters and bikes on the streets. So I have heard that from the chamber and from the bid members about, you know, just those conflicts when you're walking out of, you know, Bella Bakery and you've got cupcakes and then a scooter whiz is by you, right? So that's a challenge. There is also state legislation that just, I think it's on the governor's desk right now. And I think it's anticipated that he will sign it, that says that you, if you do not have a designated bike lane on a, an adjacent road, you will be, the cities will be prohibited from enforcing bicyclists on the sidewalk. So just something to consider. And then, I mean, we could always, if you guys do want to, to do the colored paint, just do blue and yellow.
I was going to say that.
Yeah, yeah, they just talk about, yeah, they talk about a contrasting color, so if you didn't like green, you want to do something else, we could, I'm sure we could.
I'd have to check the Hallmark movies to see which ones they do.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, we would, we would want to make sure that we, we, whatever color you came up with, that it, that it fit well with the, the manual on uniform traffic control devices. So we don't want to confuse drivers. Green's a pretty universal color for bike lanes.
Yeah, myself, you know, I'm a proponent of bike lanes. Like Brandon, I'm a cyclist and, but I never cycling, you know, when I cycle, going pretty fast, so. But I can see the need for bike lanes to keep kids off of the sidewalk. I just, I'm, I'm like Brandon, I just don't know if I want Draper to change like that. You know, I think maybe we need some public input, that's my thought.
Would there be, would there be any reason that we couldn't even table this for now? I just, you know, I, I was told that it went to bid, I was told that it went to these committees. What I'm not really told is what they said. I know that they had input on it, but I would like to just, at least, at least our partners downtown here, to go to these stores, to go to these places. And this isn't on you, Dave, I'm asking you guys to do this, but maybe us as council to ask these people, is this something that you're interested in? Because.
This graphic was in the plan too, this one.
But having it in a plan and presenting it at a committee meeting two years ago, isn't the same as walking into Casaros and asking Lisa, what are your thoughts? And then going next door, that's.
And citizens also of the Kingsburg, what their feelings are on a bike lane on Draper.
I, I do very much agree with council member North about the kids scooter thing. And then the state legislation that potentially could be coming down. But I, I do think we have a little bit more time to unpack this, unless we're running into a deadline.
No, actually, there's, there's no, there's no deadline or timetable in the grant. Now, I'm sure if we drag our feet forever, they're going to call and want the money back, but no, we're not, you're right, we're not. We don't have to do something tonight or, or tomorrow in terms of the, of the grant, so.
Draper's, Draper's just such a staple for this town that I would want to take my time to make sure that it is.
That like, my opinion would be that, the one you don't like, the, the feral one or the?
The shareo.
Shareo one, yes, because that's the least change. But yet it's, it's a, you know, unless bicyclists know, hey, and, and, and cars, motorists know that, hey, this is a, you know, you can't have a bike here in this lane.
And I, I'm not sure that that would qualify for what Alex was talking about, not being able to enforce because you don't have a bike lane. That's not a bike lane, that's just a marking to let people, to remind them that bikes can share the lane with pedestrian, with the vehicles.
Oh, that, that should qualify, I mean, it looks like, it looks like a bike lane to me.
That doesn't, that's not a bike lane, yeah, they would not consider that a bike lane.
I see, so there, there's certain qualifications for a bike lane?
Yeah, there's a definite, definitely, definite definition of what a class two bike lane is, it is not that.
I think that being, I think Chamber and Bid would be good input. And there's a good number of business owners from downtown on both of those boards and people come to meetings. There's one on Tuesday for Chamber, we just had Bid. I don't know about like really getting the opinion of like everybody in Kingsburg because I think that the impact on the sidewalks, it does impact, impact residents that are shopping, but it's really those business owners that are there all the time that really see if it is truly a need or if it isn't a need. So I think that the input from them would be important if we ask the whole community. We're going to get all kinds of.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Of responses.
We're going to get it anyway on Facebook.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we will, and even for me saying that right now, probably.
I'm just saying like.
But really, the business owners are the ones that are there every single day and have the best point of view of whether it's impacting pedestrians, their business, safety. So I think maybe, you know, if we're going to wait and get input, Chamber and Bid, current Chamber and Bid input might be a good.
I agree, yeah, at least them and. Yeah, we don't, we don't have to have a public hearing, I mean, we could, I know like, like on, like on, yeah, on Ethwell.
Well, we're all going to talk to people and just get an overall sentiment. I think that it's, you know, citizens of course are important, but I'm, I'm more looking to hear from our stakeholders, our actual downtown stakeholders. Because with, without hearing from them, it's, it would be a no for me for all of them, just because I don't want to change Draper. But I think that it's going to depend if it would benefit their business or hurt their business, I want to hear from them.
So maybe Chamber can add it to their agenda? Or if you want me to, I can bring it up, but whatever.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, we haven't heard from the public on this agenda item, any public comment?
She needs to come up to the.
Could you please come up?
Okay, through all of this, there's one large segment of the population. Oh, Chris, you guys know who I am, I'm Chris, and yes, I live in town. Through all of this, a large segment of the population was not mentioned at all. And that's the elderly, because there, we have, and, and we'll all be there someday, some of us sooner than others. But, and I just bring this up because I, and I know the world changes, but they're kind of used to doing what they do in the same way. And how would you educate, okay, the public in general, if you do any of these programs? Or even the, you know, the elderly, because, you know, I don't think they're going to be coming down on their bicycles or their tric, adult tricycles. But, you know, if you just walk on Draper Street and you see someone you know is elderly, you stop and wait. I do because I've been, you know, almost hit a few times over the years. Anyway, and that was just, I'm listening to this and nothing about the elderly and how this would affect them and learning how to deal with it and the new rules and, I mean, I don't, so that's one of the things that I think really needs to be considered as well.
Is your concern that they're not safe on the sidewalk because bikes are there? Or is your concern that backing out over a bike lane would be an issue?
Right, and just, and just seeing the new markings, yeah, these bike markings are in other towns, but, you know, I have an aunt, okay, she lives in Selma, but she only drives in Selma and Kingsburg anymore and she kind of uses the same path. And, and, you know, in, in talking to her, well, she, you know, there's certain things she doesn't, she's less aware of, I'll just put it that way, because, well, I've been going down this road for seventy years, you know? And so there's, you know, and I can't speak for the elderly, what they think or don't think, but I just know that we have a, a large percentage of elderly in this town that still drive. They're not going to be riding their bikes.
So your concern is backing out?
Backing out and just being aware of the markings and what does that mean? And if they see a bike there, with, when they're not used to seeing bikes.
So, Chris, one of the things that we can work on is work with the PD. If we do end up with anything, I know we have good content. If we do end up with anything, I know we have good contacts at, like, Linaya's and at Marion. They have kind of community meetings. Where we can maybe send Officer Fuentes or one of the other traffic safety people to kind of give a presentation even beforehand, so they know it's coming.
That's, that's a great idea. But again, I just bring that up because nothing was mentioned about this.
We haven't talked about an education piece because we haven't made a decision.
Right, but that's, to me, when, I don't know what.
That's a good point, yeah.
Percentage of elderly in this town, or if it's, you know, I don't know, but there's always been a lot, so.
Right, yeah, thank you. It's a good point. Yep, any more council discussion? Uh, does staff have direction on? I think that's what our Friday proposed designs, yeah. Okay.
So, you have direction or you have.
I think, I think I have direction.
Yes, alright, thank you, Dave. Six point four Memorial Park restroom replacement report by City Attorney Dave Peters, presentation by Dave Peters.
Hi again. So this is a follow-up on our discussion about. Replacing the restrooms over at Memorial Park. I was before you a couple of months ago. We talked about it. Preparing a CDBG application for rehabbing or replacing the restrooms. Council chose to not do that because of a desire to get the project done a little quicker than what that program was going to allow. So since then, the, the project's been discussed by the finance committee. And we're here tonight to, um, kind of report out on that. The plan at this point is to, uh, replace the restrooms with a new, uh, with a new building. And convert the existing restrooms to essentially storage and janitorial use. The cost of the project, the updated, the cost estimate, the cost is estimated to be four hundred and one thousand dollars. Two, four, four hundred and one thousand two hundred dollars. Again, we would, uh. Do a similar restroom structure to that, which is being installed at, uh, Athwall Park. It would most likely be a four-stall restroom, so a little bit bigger. But similar in that it would be pre-manufactured and delivered to the job site and set. If council chooses to, um. Direct staff to move forward with the final design, we could, um, complete the project and have it available for use in April of twenty twenty-four. So I've included a schedule in the staff report. Essentially, you know, finishing the design this year, bidding it early next year and having it done by April. So with that, I can have it answer any questions. Again, we're asking for, for direction in regards to moving forward.
Any question from council?
I'm excited about it.
Any questions or comments from our public on this agenda item? No, I think we're all in favor of, uh.
Perfect.
Moving forward with that. Dave, thank you. Six point five T-Mobile Hometown Grant Award for Athwall Park. Staff report by Community Service Director Adam Castaneda. Presentation by Adam Castaneda.
Well, good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So today, I just want to go ahead and bring up. That the city of Kingsburg has been selected as a recipient for the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program. This is a program that's sponsored by T-Mobile and has a total commitment of over twenty-five million dollars over the next five years. Or through, uh, two thousand and twenty-six to support community projects in small towns, um, all across the United States. This last quarter, or each quarter, they, um, select twenty-five grants of up to fifty thousand dollars to be awarded. Uh, to fund shovel-ready projects, um, that aim to, to build, rebuild, refresh community spaces. Fostering local connections in small towns. Um, so T, the T-Mobile Grant Program. Offers funding opportunities for projects to contribute to the betterment of small towns, uh, with populations of fifty thousand residents or less. And so we're proud to announce that today Kingsburg's grant application was successful. And we will be receiving the maximum award of fifty thousand dollars, um, for the enhancement of Athwall Park. Um, the official grant presentation will take place this coming Tuesday, October tenth, at eleven thirty at Athwall Park. And this is where community leaders and representatives of T-Mobile will present, um, the city with a giant check, um, for the fifty thousand dollars. And there will be a small ribbon ceremony, a ribbon cutting ceremony, uh, with the Chamber of Commerce there as well to. Kind of, um, open up the, the use of the restrooms for the public, uh, since that project is, um, pretty much nearing completion. So. And with that, we just want to make that announcement to council, um, to formally invite you out. I know I've been working with Mayor Palomar on, um, some presentation stuff that we'll be working on, uh, that day. And, um, and so, yeah, with that, I'm happy to answer any question, any questions, but, uh, happy to make that announcement to council tonight, so.
Any questions for Adam on this agenda item? Great, thank you, Adam. I'm glad, I'm glad we got that, uh, grant, definitely. Six point six. Crime statistics report for the month of August twenty twenty-three and general police department update. Crime statistics report. Prepared by Police Department Records Supervisor Adam, uh, Karina Padilla. Presentation by Police Chief Neil Dadian. Welcome, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and good evening, members of the council. Uh, just a reminder, this is a quarterly report, so. The last stats that we have are from. August, uh, and I'm here actually a couple of weeks early. Normally, I would come later in the month. At the second meeting, but I'll be out of town. Excuse me, at a conference, so, um, we don't have those September stats published, but they will be published, uh. Next council meeting, I'm guessing. Okay, so anyway, that said, uh, it was a busy summer. And, um, I have a lot to throw at you. Feel free to interrupt me at any time, but I know it's getting late and. I'm just gonna power through this stuff. But there's a, a handful of significant things that I, I do want, uh, council to be aware of. So first few things I have kind of relate to school and students. An expelled former Kingsburg High School student posted threats on social media. About wanting to kill another current high school student, um, posted some pictures with. You know, they were corrupt, showing the victim in deceased forms. Detectives followed up on this allegation, found that, uh, the former student now lives in Sanger with his, with his mother. Arrangements were made to have his parents bring him to Kingsburg PD. He was arrested and booked into juvenile hall. And we also had another expelled former student from Kingsburg High told a friend on social media that he was going to shoot up the school because he was bullied at school. Detectives investigated and found the social media posts with the juvenile holding a gun. He now lives in Fresno, but he was also brought down by his parents, arrested and booked into juvenile hall. We had a twelve-year-old, um, male juvenile from Rafer Johnson, who was overheard telling another student that he was going to shoot up. Or shoot the fellow student. He was suspended for pushing the kid down some stairs previously, and, and we did some back and forth. Uh, this was a little more of a third-hand information. Anyway, the officers interviewed him and. We've referred that one to the district attorney's office. We'll see how that one plays out, but there's no firearms access at his house. We, we've made sure of that. Some major crimes that we've had, we did have five juveniles who jumped another one at Memorial Park, causing some serious injuries. And all five of those were identified and arrested. The victim was from Selma. The, um, we had officers respond to Save Mart, uh, this, this kind of unusual theft. We had two females load up a cart with alcohol. And use the emergency exit to take it out. And we even about, got about eleven hundred dollars worth of, um, alcohol. So we're still working that case. We also had officers, uh, observed a gray lifted pickup truck. That may have been related to some other felonies and, and another stolen vehicle in the city. This is just a few weeks ago in September. Officers attempted to stop the truck, pursuit ensued, um, ended up in Tulare County near Traver in a. In an orchard. The truck we were chasing was confirmed stolen at the time, but when, went into the orchard, it was lifted. It had the advantage on the patrol car and that got away. So we're still working, working that case. We had, uh, an elderly male, uh, who was arrested after he sexually assaulted, uh, male juvenile who was walking to Oasis High School. The juvenile voluntarily, voluntarily followed the suspect to his residence, which was nearby, um, when he was assaulted. So the suspect was arrested and booked in Fresno County Jail on numerous felony charges. And is currently out on bail, but the district attorney has obtained a stayaway order. For that victim. We had a kind of another unusual incident. Officers contacted an individual near the Denny's parking lot. Uh, he was found to have a warrant for his arrest out of Los Angeles County. So he was arrested, but once he was arrested. He became combative, started kicking out the officers, had to be carried physically into the police department for booking because he refused to walk. Uh, while at the police department, he spit, uh, numerous times at, at the officers. Um, they, he attempted to remove his own handcuffs and when the officers tried to stop him, he started kicking them, tried to take a handgun from one of the officers. Urinated in a patrol car. He was not, um, cooperative at all. So he was taken to the hospital medically cleared and, um, that's where he tried to actually take the, the gun from, uh, one of the sergeants. Um, he was booked into Fresno County Jail on numerous felonies. And follow-up on him showed that, um, he had been pimping females up and down. There's a circuit. And anywhere from San Francisco to Los Angeles, he'd been pimping females. And the Los Angeles County Sheriff has an open case on him for pimping charges. We had some building materials removed from the twenty-nine-hundred block of Nineteenth Avenue under some, on some new construction. About eighteen hundred dollars in loss at that location. We did have a high school student who reported that her stepfather had been sending her inappropriate photos of himself. And making comments about wanting to get intimate with her. Uh, we immediately came, became involved in that case. I obtained enough evidence to arrest him. Um, we basically sat up on him, uh, up in Fresno at his place of business. And left him when he was leaving work. And he has, uh, children, uh, from three different, um, with, with three different women. So we were able to obtain emergency protective orders on all of those children. So we were quite concerned over that one and spent a lot of time getting him into custody. Oh, uh, Sergeant Fourlines, ever diligent, observed a male running out of an alley, and this is about four-thirty in the morning, one morning in August. And could hear a burglar alarm sounding in the area. He got into, the male got into a vehicle. We eventually stopped that. Contacted two suspects in the vehicle. They had numerous tools in their vehicle. We located three work trucks in the area that were burglarized, uh, and tools that we identified, uh, from that burg, from those burglaries. So we were able to return those and those guys went to jail. Uh, another. Case of sexual assault, uh, juvenile was, sixteen-year-old was babysitting for her sister when her brother-in-law sexually assaulted her. So again, we immediately, uh, investigated that protective order, um, served a search warrant on his location, arrested and booked him into Fresno County Jail as well. And, um. I don't know what it is, but, and, so we had a suspect who basically, I think, just. I was told he found the Lord and wanted to come clean, so he admitted to his wife that, um, he had sexually abused his nine-year-old stepdaughter about five. About four years ago when she was five years old. He came into the police department, the, the mother reported that to us. He came in the police department, confessed. So he got arrested as well. And then in the last three months, we've had seventeen residential, commercial and vehicle burglaries, stole, twelve stolen vehicle reports. Hiring is moving. Um, we, uh, hired one reserve officer. We have two in the hiring process. One of our, um. Full-time new officers, uh, just kind of went from phase one to phase two. It's a, there's a three-phase program for that. Um, he was delayed a little bit. Did a military, uh, assignment over the summer. We have, uh, a young lady starting her field training in October and another young lady starting, um, her training in, in December. So looking forward to bringing those folks on. Um, the last one's starting in December. She's just finishing up some other military orders. New assignments, we have Officer Gabe Castellanos, who began his assignment as a school resource officer. For the Kingsburg Elementary Charter School District contract. Officer Joey Aravalo began his assignment. That's not mine, is it?
No.
Officer Aravalo began his assignment as the, uh, school resource officer with the Kingsburg, uh, Joint Union High School District. Prior to that, he was the school resource officer on the Prop fifty-six tobacco grant, so he was handling all the schools. Now he's just dedicated to, um, the high school. District. And Officer, uh, Officer Jennifer Villanueva became Detective Jennifer Villanueva and began her assignment as a detective. Last month. Whole bunch of training, real quick, forty hours of internet, internet crimes against children training, ICAC training. On investigative techniques, eight hours of resiliency training for first responders, forty hours National Gang Violence Conference attendance. Eight-hour civil procedures for law enforcement, eighty-hour post-supervisory course for, uh, a new sergeant. Happened in December. Um, some detectives and a police services technician attended eight-hour course on sex offender. Registration and tracking enforcement training. Lieutenant Pendley, uh, Lieutenant Stevens and Detective Villanueva attended sixteen hours of public information officer training. Officer Aravalo and Castellanos attended, uh, the forty-hour school resource officer course. We had a sergeant attend, um. Another sergeant attend supervisor training. Forty hours, officers attended forty hours of critical incident training. Optus instructor training, officers attended some less lethal and pursuit control device training. Our magic detective attended forty hours of a, uh, gang training course. Myself and the lieutenant attended the US Attorney's Conference, uh, and, or the executive summit. And then we also attended the Fresno Badera Chiefs Annual Workshop. Of note, Sergeant Kroger completed an eight-month supervisory leadership institute course, which was quite comprehensive. That, I, I've mentioned that before, but not for a few years. So what that is, is that's basically four days. For an eight, um, a month, for an eight-month period, a lot of reading, a lot of writing and a project. It's, um, for law enforcement sergeants only. Uh, that line-level supervision is what their, the target audience is for the. Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training. And it's not, it's not just showing up. It is a lot of effort. So, um, I was able to attend his graduation, which was up in Folsom, and he did a really good job and I think got a lot out of that. We had three sworn staff and three professional staff attend the Women's Leadership in Law Enforcement Symposium in September. That's put on by Cal Chiefs. And that's becoming more and more popular. So I've had people at that for the last three years and I intend to continue to, to support that. Because it gets us a lot in the way of, um, networking, leadership training, uh, and just, uh, officer wellness. That's, which is their focus, the, those three things. Grants we've applied for the BJA Small Rural Tribal Body worn Camera Grant, February. We got the thumbs down on that one. But we are moving forward with purchasing body worn camera. But we are moving forward with purchasing body worn cameras and dash cams with Measure E funds, which we set aside and we're, you know, hoping about the BJA grant, but got denied. We also applied for organized retail theft prevention grant from the Bureau of State Community Corrections. And then we were informed last month that we were not awarded that. I was really disappointed about that. Actually, we'll voice my displeasure. I think they could have thrown us some money, right? Fresno and Clovis got a lot. Colinga got some too. But I think we, you know, made a pretty good case for the ninety nine corridor and working those and, you know, we get hit. So and I've mentioned it before, some of the retailers don't even tell us. They just absorb the loss. It's a corporate thing, but you know, that's important that we stay on that. So I was kind of disappointed that we were not awarded a grant. But we also have applied for the Prop fifty six tobacco grant, which we previously had with our school resource officer. Mentioned this at my last visit. We are, we have shifted our focus from school resource officer, which DOJ has actually shifted their focus as far as funding law enforcement. They're not interested in intervention and prevention and education. They're more interested in criminal action against retailers. So that's how we crafted our grant. Townsend was a big help in that. So we're hopeful that one sprouts some wings and we can, we can hire a body because that's what we're asking for is a detective position out of that funded over three years. Some of the good deeds we've had that I do want to pass on. In July, Officer Castellanos received recognition from the Mothers Against Drunk Driving for eight DUI arrests that he made in twenty twenty two. He was recognized for that. Officers participated in the Rise Up Basketball Camp at Rafe Johnson Junior High School. We participated, the police department and the Kingsburg Police Officers Association participated in the annual backpack giveaway at K Caps. We gave away the backpacks, obviously, and some reflector lights for pedestrian safety. In August, Sergeant Carey wrote an article about crimes of opportunity that was published in the Dollar Monthly. In September, Sergeant Gonzalez wrote an article about human trafficking also that was published in the Dollar. And Lieutenant Stevens and Detective Gagnon were coaching youth football when they noticed a woman having a medical emergency. This was in August. Detective Gagnon performed CPR on the woman until EMS arrived, took over. She did survive and was released from the hospital the next day. So we're going to certainly recognize that at the appropriate time coming up. In September, Detective Villanueva and Detective Ramirez, who works magic, they participated in the Walk For Walk Like Mad fundraiser in Clovis for the Mothers Against Drunk Driving. We will notice are participating in the Pink Patch Campaign, which we have done for about the last, I think, six years now. Lieutenant Pendley and I, along with Officer Gagnon, representing the Police Officers Association, were at their kickoff last Thursday. And then I participated in the Blue Mass for Law Enforcement at St. John's Cathedral on Friday. That concludes my report. Happy to answer your questions.
Questions from counsel on this? I have one question, Chief. The two women that took their alcohol, did you say they were red? They were caught?
No.
Oh, they weren't caught?
We're still working that one.
Oh, I see. So that, yeah, that's why you're working it. And one more question. The five boys arrested at Memorial Park, did the cameras help you at all in that arrest?
Specifically, I don't know. I'll find out and I'll I'll get back to you, but I don't know.
Okay.
I suspect that they they were though.
Right, okay, great. Thank you. Keep up the good work, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Six point seven, twenty twenty three Fire Department Update, presentation by Fire Chief Daniel Perkins, presentation by Chief Daniel Perkins.
Thought that was your timer for chief that went off. Don't you guys compete on time?
No, my apologies. Yeah, operator error. Absolutely operator error. Frustrating. You think you got it on silent and it's still on silent and it still goes through. I don't know how that works. I do not know. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public and associated staff. I'm happy to be in front of you tonight to specifically speak about the overview for twenty twenty three slash twenty twenty two for the Kingsburg Fire Department. I will keep this very ten thousand foot view because we've been involved in so many different things that we could talk about ad nauseam and I'd like to basically introduce that to you over time rather than take up all the rest of your time tonight. So we would definitely try to keep this short. Again, mission vision values, going back to this and aligning that with what we're doing. And it's a constant reminder as if you come into all the fire stations, again, we see it. We are starting, I think, truly to be part of this and all of the staff are on board with it. It's one of the few places I've worked in my thirty plus years in the fire services where I actually hear it from the lowest level in the organization that they appreciate it and they feel like there's a direction. So it's nice to be appreciated. Overview EMS operational things, just basic, basic overview, but I want us to get refreshed on what we're talking about as we move forward this next year. Fire rescue services and what that looks like, what areas we serve. Department's statistics, I don't want to bore you, but I want to show you where we were pre me coming here, so twenty eighteen, all the way through to now. So basically how we've grown and what the things we've done have had impacts to the community and what we're experiencing. Department's five year retro view, again, that's that same basic thing, what we've accomplished in those five years. And department strategic goals, again, very overviewish rather than get very granular on you. And then organizational charts, where we're currently at and what the possibility of proposed changes would be. Again, we don't have to take any comment on it specifically, but just more of an awareness. Fire Department, basically what we do. Fire is kind of a unique little name, but it encompasses a lot more than just fire. This is one of the specific rescues. Ironically, we had equipment that was granted to us by the Rotary Group as well as a couple other businesses. And less than two weeks later, we were using it to rescue a person out of this plastic container that he got into trying to help his dad out. So confined space type of rescue. Again, fire incidents at T-Mobile, some of our crews actually doing the job and one of the recent fires. And luckily, knock on wood, we've had very few of those, which I'm just fine with. I'd rather not go to see someone else's stuff burned up and tragically gone forever. Rescue, this is something we've gone into and been a little bit more involved in. It's really starting to pay off large dividends, not only in our experience level for our department, but also in the types of things that we serve the community with. A lot of people are unaware that we actually do these very technical rescues. And it's also allowed us to get more involved in a regional concept where we're actually asked to be subject matter experts, not only in instructing, but also in delivering this particular type of craft to the public. This is a picture of someone down in a vault inside of a sewage treatment area and actually going down in this unsupplied air to rescue someone at the end of the tunnel. So we are involved in this rescue training consistently and over time we will be more and more involved in it because it's one of the items that we have this kind of a, I don't know, a little bit of a void space between two larger cities that provide those services regionally, but we don't want to miss the opportunity to actually save a life when we're asked to do so. Different types of rescue training, trench, high angle, low angle, ropes, confined space, all kinds of different things go into the idea of rescue. EMS and other operations, but really the fire operation in general, wanted to just again, do an overview of what does it take to be a firefighter and the total number of hours of training. Eight hundred hours for a basic fire academy in the state of California plus EMT, nine hundred and twenty hours as a firefighter. That's not a firefighter paramedic. For us firefighter two, after that first year, they add another two hundred and forty additional hours of training to get their firefighter two. So at the end of a year, at the end of probation, a firefighter for the city of Kingsburg has a minimum of eleven hundred and sixty hours of training. They operate in the direction of a captain. And again, we we train our folks to probably some of the highest standards of rescue in the Central Valley. The next comparable agency would be the city of Fresno and we have better equipment currently than the city of Fresno does. Again, thanks to the community and the gracious grant processes that we've been able to partake in. On the EMS side, we deliver EMS in two separate ways. Basically with a rescue ambulance, which basically means there's a lot of extra equipment on a larger box ambulance rather than a smaller ambulance you'd see in a metropolitan area. This is specifically because we have longer transport times. We also get into areas where we're asked to do our rescue things that we're trained to do and we have to have a place to store the equipment and to transport it. So we don't have the opportunity to have a smaller, more mobile, cheaper ambulance, but this is out actually also had a big benefit to the community. Paramedic fire equipment was another piece of that. All of our fire engines and fire equipment are all paramedic based, so that is a another big boon to the community. Has a big impact on that one. You can actually bring the emergency room capabilities to the scene and immediately affect a rescue or to save a life. A paramedic has twelve hundred hours of training in addition to the firefighter training. Firefighter paramedic at the end of that has twenty three hundred and sixty hours of training when they show up on the doorstep here. It's a tremendous amount of training hours and you'd think, wow, that's incredible. It's comparable to, and if you think about it, a bachelor's degree in hours is five thousand hours of total classroom time. So it's essentially associate's degree without having to go through all of your basic general ed classes in time spent. Again, they operate under a direct relationship physician and function between a nurse and a physician. So again, just basic overview of what what they are and what they do. What services are we actually providing? Again, emergency room on wheels is kind of the concept. Our average response times. So to put this into perspective, this is the nine three six three one map of the of the zip code and where it moves from and around. So our average response times within this box, also in the smaller area immediately surrounding Kingsburg in the Kingsburg city proper. So when we start talking about that, I want to help define it. So you get kind of the geographic map of what that looks like. For fire in our Kingsburg city limits, it's four minutes and forty six seconds is the current average response time as of two weeks ago. EMS in that same, excuse me, in that same box, four minutes and thirty six seconds. And why does that matter? Basically, for every minute past four minutes, you develop brain death. You can basically hold your breath and not have any implications other than passing out. After four minutes, you start having brain death and then subsequently less survivability after that. So it's important for us to have these response times down and we're really monitoring them significantly. There we go. Why, why do we have these standards? This is a nationally recognized standard, NFPA seventeen ten. Goes into the how we organize the fire department, why we ask for what we ask for. And they set those specific times for fires in an immediate area in a metropolitan setting. They recommend that you have a four minute response time on average nationally. EMS, eight minutes. So we're a little bit over average for a fire, but that's in a metropolitan area. And again, we are, we're having this process have changed from twenty eighteen to now. Where we were in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we were essentially a combination, primarily volunteer fire department. And we moved to a total paid department within less than two years. And now we've had this three year cycle where we're coming up on that. And we're almost to the point where we're meeting those nationally recognized minimum response times, which is, it's pretty decent. That also accounts for four members being on scene. We currently only get to basically that recommended four minutes with four members fifty percent of the time because our EMS units are so busy that leaves two other folks on the fire engine to arrive. And then we wait for our other partners that we work with, Selma, Fresno County Fire Protection District, any other units that are around that area from other partners that help us get that number of people there to operate safely. This is our EMS response zone in the colored portions. That is actually the hospital district area plus a few extra miles on top of that. That particular plot is a hundred and sixty five square miles when we think about that. So we have a two square mile city area. EMS or our EMS units, we have a specific area that's given to us of a hundred and sixty five square miles. Our fire area is about double that at three hundred and ten square miles, but our immediate response area is basically about a half mile in addition to the city border. That's our immediate automated area. So it's just perspective. What are we talking about when we talk about those response times? It's not in this huge area from here to San Diego. That's not how we operate. It's a kind of a melting pot of a system that we utilize. So year to year comparisons, total call volume from twenty eighteen, twenty one sixty two, seventy percent medical, twenty percent fire. When we go to twenty nineteen, we jump up to twenty four fifty four, seventy eight percent medical, twenty two percent fire. This is about the time I came here. It was June of twenty nineteen. So we experienced a significant increase in call volume, about three hundred calls per year, just in that one year period. So it would account for a lot of your growth in in the community prior to me arriving. In twenty twenty, it jumped up to twenty five ninety six. Can you see about the balance of about eighty percent medical, twenty percent fire? That stays pretty consistent until we get to about twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Twenty twenty one, seventy seven percent medical, twenty three percent fire and twenty eight forty three was the call volume. This is when we started having COVID hit and the ramifications of COVID, but our call volume has not decreased since then. So we pretty much stayed on par with that. Right now, or this last year, we had twenty nine twenty seven. And to put this into perspective too, the busiest fire stations in the city of Fresno typically experience about four thousand calls a year. We're just under that for the one station that we're staffing. So in relative context, where we're at and how busy we are. Year to date, that basically is from September twenty third, when I actually did this particular stat, it was twenty eight hundred and ninety four calls year to year. So if we were to play this all out, we would just break three thousand calls at the end of the year, which will be a different kind of a milestone for us. This is another big one where you're seeing the medical calls increase and our fire calls decrease because we're now capturing more of the medical calls because we have a twenty four hour, seven day a week, three hundred and sixty five day a year second full time ambulance. So we're capturing more calls, which then starts to adjust your statistical balance. Pre second ambulance, twenty five hundred and eighty one total calls we were experiencing. Seventeen hundred and ninety two of those were in nine three six three one. This is a big one right here. There were eight hundred and twenty calls again in twenty nineteen that we were missing. This was pre second ambulance and this is why we came, made the case for this. And then what have we done since then? There were six hundred and fourteen transported by other agencies and our unit reliability was really low. We were about fifty four percent. We're really shooting for that ninetieth percentile if we can of unit reliability. Twenty twenty one, first six months, we saw a ten percent increase in calls from the previous year. Started to have a decrease in the unmet calls, but again, that unit reliability wasn't nearly what we were shooting for, but we had an increase of about eighteen percent in that unit reliability. Twenty twenty two, twenty three, at the twenty two month benchmark, we saw a huge decrease in lost calls. So we were about half of the calls, just as we had projected, we were actually gaining those calls in transport capability. And only ninety seven people were transported by other agencies compared to six hundred in the previous block of time that we're comparing it to. So five hundred and sixty percent decrease in lost revenue or calls. So is it effective? Yes, just statistically, it's effective. So how does this all play out and why does it matter? This plays into the part of our payer mix within our community. This payer mix, as presented here in one of the statistical charts by Sharp Ambulance Billing, they send this to us on a monthly basis. It shows actually what we're receiving in payments from these Medicare, Medi-Cal, Medicaid and our actual insurance payments. Why does that matter to you? It's basically how we function as an enterprise. It's basically how we function as an enterprise fund and the fire department. So if this changes, it changes the makeup and how we can actually provide those services. So this is something we are looking at constantly. This is a very important piece for us. And if it changes, if this mix changes, so if we have an influx of folks that don't have insurance, if we have a change in demographic, if we had a huge change in the workforce or people lost their insurances, it would have a huge impact on the payer mix, which is again, our bottom line. Who pays the bills and where does the money come from? Groups we serve are identified again by that type of insurance. There's no significant change in the payer group. This Medicare, Medi-Cal, Medicaid is still the largest percentage of where we get our money and that's about 60%. Percentage of payments have changed by group though. The Medicare, Medi-Cal, Medicaid group again was 60% of all the receivables. We're now getting 76% of the bottom-line net money from that 60% of the people who pay because of changes in the way we're reimbursed. So we're seeing this funding change from an average of $350 a run from Medicaid, Medi-Cal, and Medicare. That was what they were basically paying us for each of those runs. That doesn't pay for the fuel, let alone any other of the people that are operating the units. And at that 60% of our calls, we would have operated this at a negative in the red for however long and in perpetuity. Luckily, this has changed from $350 to $1,100 on average since about August. But again, this is a very speculative number. It's something to look at, but not put a lot of weight into until we see it play out over a longer period of time. Be more conservative with the estimates on what might, how it might impact us. Newest reimbursement rates again, because it's about a 90- to 120-day billing cycle even for most insurances, we'll see that net money come in and we won't see the end of it all for about three to four months. So what does that mean? It's about a 43% net increase in receivables. That makes it more lucrative for us to keep doing what we're doing, maintaining that second ambulance and making that a priority for fiscal sustainability. If we don't do that, we will operate in the negative and we will have to change how we're doing business. So just a basic overview, departmental changes. 2018, make sure he passes, sorry, we added three full-time firefighter paramedics and a new engine was purchased. 2019, we became a 100% paid department. We went from that partial paid combination to 100% full-time paid. That was a big game changer for the community. I think we've seen a lot of positive results from that. Purchased a new command vehicle. I came onboard, replaced outdated radios, began training programs officially, and that has also netted us a tremendous amount of money. Typically right now, we're netting about $21,000 a year just in training reimbursement monies through what's called an ISA agreement with the community colleges. So we are logging all that through the college, goes through a specific vetting process, and we are actually using that as a for-profit piece in essence for us to get money back on the training that we're doing. So the more we train, the more we make. We also started getting money for a new ambulance from the community, Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District, now the Kingsburg Healthcare District. Brought Station Two back to an operational status. We got the new ambulance was received, began succession planning. That succession planning has been instrumental too in a lot of our training. We're essentially bringing our standards up to what would be recognized as a professional fire department. A lot of succession planning has been placing people in specific positions to act, to train them how to do the job and to bring us into this fire service model that we've now grown accustomed to over the last three or four years. Staffing was broken up into phases. Phase one was train the people. Phase two is put them into the jobs that we've been training them for. Phase three is to basically make enough money to support that particular model. So it's a phased approach to what we're doing. So there's actually a method to the madness rather than, oh, we think we're going to do that. It's better to have a plan and have everybody onboard with the plan. Again, replacement equipment for outdated radios, added part-time administrative staff. We added full-time administrative staff in 2021, which was a huge boon to me, took a lot of workload off of mine, and we secured 50% of the funding for six fire, full-time firefighter medics, placed a staff vehicle, and then began our community risk reduction program, which has been also instrumental in moving forward a lot of areas. Added that second full-time ambulance and increased revenue from the ambulance initially. That was our basic idea that we came to you two years ago and said, hey, we haven't changed our ambulance rates for 10 years. That has proven to be very, very fruitful for us and also balanced us, righted the ship in many, many ways so that we are actually now making the money to do the job that we're doing. We're not quite breaking even yet, but we're getting much closer than we were, much, much closer. And it's been instrumental. Staffing also went into phase two, which was keep training the people and start putting them into those acting positions. We reclassed in the insurance service office because of our community risk reduction efforts from a class three to a class two. And hopefully now with your insurances, you've actually seen some decrease in your home insurance and/or your business insurance. Typically you see a 5% to 7% decrease with an increase in your ISO class. It's a huge benefit to the community. Gain ability to have members be part of the Urban Search and Rescue Regional Task Force as paramedics. There's only one other agency that's doing that currently and that was Tullary City Fire Department and they've now since relegated that to us. So we are the only paramedic group that's on that regional task force from Sacramento to Bakersfield. We're it. Successfully passed the employee incentive plan, repaired facilities, and increased ambulance revenue generally by 36%. So it's been a huge benefit to the community as well. Replaced the staff vehicle, ordered a second new engine, again with the additional major E funds, changed radio communications providers and saw an increase in efficiency. This is where we start to see a lot of the things we've been doing make a big difference in this ROSC rate, return of spontaneous circulation. Just as Chief Dadian pointed out, now we have people who we're seeing that have a heart attack. We have initial bystander CPR. We have very effective crew members that have undergone all of that training that we saw earlier, that 2,160 hours worth of training. And we're seeing people come back from those events back to a normal life. We are now in the upper-third by population in ROSC rates in the nation. Typically for a city of our size, we have about eight to nine ROSCs or return of spontaneous circulations or survival rates for CPR. We're at 12 and 15. So we are definitely in that top third. Our goal is to remain in that top third, if not even get into the top 5% of ROSC rates, but that takes a larger effort and different equipment than we currently have. Saw an increase again in ambulance revenue and staffing phase three preparation was begun. All right, so strategic goals, very again, overview. One of the things that was coined in our strategic planning part that you all took part in, and I think that was well-coined by Alex, was the Kingsburg experience. And the way that we support that Kingsburg experience is for us to complete that community risk assessment standard of cover document by the end of 2024. It's essentially a third-party group that comes in, just like you've hired other people to do and look at what we're doing. Are we doing what we are supposed to be doing? Give us that feedback and then to establish, here's where you're at, this is what we should be doing, and how do we meet in the middle? How do we adjust our goals and adjust what we're doing to meet those expectations? Financial stability, increased revenue by 5% annually from additional diverse revenue streams. Training, we have some other things that we'll hopefully be able to reveal to you later on with different partnerships with utility groups. That was a promising thing we learned about the other day. Increased ambulance enterprise revenue streams by 10% by the end of fiscal year 2024, again, increasing our effectiveness and efficiency. Successfully use grant writers to obtain supporting grants for needed equipment. That's also been a hugely effective thing for us. Support businesses, provide two-week turnarounds and fire-related plan checks. Currently, our turnaround time for that varies between a week and a month just due to staffing and different elements of administrative pulls and pushes. We want to have that be a lot more business-friendly where we can tell someone, absolutely, the minute you bring your plan to us, we will have that plan checked and completed with the entire process within two weeks. So we have to have these benchmarks that we're, we have as goals. That's the only way to achieve it. Provide FAQs for fire-related permits and fees on our webpage that's associated with the city's website so people have access to the information and they have those immediate answers to their questions. They know what we're doing and why we're asking them to do it. Reach 100% of BE SAFE inspections by the end of fiscal year 2024. Right now, I will be honest, it's abysmal. We are less than 25% of those BE SAFE inspections, but again, that has been due to us training, getting people in the right positions, creating all the things to do that. It's a pretty lofty goal to change it from 25% to 100%. I think we've done a lot of different things and it's a huge benefit to the community when we can go out to all businesses within a calendar year and do a fire safety inspection. And that's part of the normal process that we already have in place. Decrease the ISO rating in a fire department from a two to a one over the next five-year cycle. We were 1.7 points away from being an ISO rated one. There's only two other cities in the Central Valley that are rated a one. One of them's close. So I think we're fairly close. Just for reference points, our neighbors to the north are a low, low, low three and still remain that, that's Selma. And the City of Fresno is actually a three. So we were at the same rating. We went from a three to a two in comparison. Community engagement, increased fire med subscriber list by 5% annually. That's essential to us really balancing out those concerns that you all had with our ambulance increase or rate increase. So we're meeting the needs of the public so we don't outpace what we have the ability to have people pay for. That outreach is really important and we want to make sure that people have access to healthcare and they don't make decisions that say, I don't want to call the ambulance because they don't want the bill. I'd rather have them be a fire med subscriber, pay the $65 a year and have their bills taken care of. We have that ability to do that. And that's again, why this is one of our bigger pieces of the puzzle. Other pieces of community engagement, increased outreach by 10% to all members in the greater Kingsburg community in a number of different ways. I don't want to keep listing all the things that are out here, but that engagement's really critical and that outreach is critical. The schools, public presentations, being represented out in the community and letting people know what we're doing and why we're doing it. Complete implementation of the ImageTrend software, that's a huge one that will benefit us with statistics. These statistics are at best painful to try to extrapolate from the stuff we have now, this new system that we actually budgeted for this year, signed the contract for. We should have this implemented by January 1st. So this will really play a part of that ROSC piece of the puzzle where we have better data, we have the better ability to watch what we're doing, how we're doing it, and who we're doing it with, if that makes sense. That data piece of the puzzle becomes very, very large for us. Increased information regarding timely safety messages, again, through our webpage involvement by 10%. Community safety, we want to decrease morbidity and injury in all age groups 5% annually. That means we want to increase our ROSC rate by 5% annually as well as anything with fire-related deaths. Luckily, we've only had one fire-related death in the last 36 months in, within the city, and we are working diligently to have none. If we never have that, again, I would be very happy, very, very, very happy. Increased free smoke detectors installation by 50%. We had put in 178 of them last year. We partnered with American Red Cross, will be doing that in November, I think it's the 13th, yeah, November 13th, we're going to partner with them again, try to reach 360 smoke detectors this year in basically the same format, looking for those demographic areas that are really susceptible to this. Decrease EMS response times by 5% or 13 seconds. Increase safety at fire-risk EMS incidents by addition of assigned safety officer or a chief officer at all scenes within five minutes. So it's really pushing us into these boxes of accountability to not only ourselves, but to the public. These are things that we come accustomed to expecting and now that we have trained people, we have people that are ready for the task, I think these are the things that we're also ready for, for an uphill climb rather than a just status quo. I don't think that's what you're paying us to do. Decrease fire response times by 13 seconds, decrease outside agency involvement by 25%. So you want to get rid of the 97 calls that we're missing and decrease that by 25 calls. It's another lofty goal. That is consistently making sure that our ambulances are available, ready to run the calls and move forward. All right, I'm just going to put these out there as reference pieces. This is something we can talk about at a much later date. This is just what we currently do and how we're organized. This is what most people are doing. It's a little bit painstaking to watch it and follow everything through, but really the, if I had to boil this down, we are really wearing a tremendous number of hats in areas that keep us from moving forward like we've set our goals to. We have to at some point in time move to the next gen version of ourselves, which is alleviate some of the over taxing of different individuals in areas and expand it slightly. But again, conservatively, making sure that we have the money to do so prior to doing that, that's essential. And that's really what the next one kind of shows is what does that take? What does that look like? Now that, again, on the right, the impacts is the full build-out. That is probably a three-to-five-year build-out. So this is nothing that's going to happen in the next year, next, after that. It's going to take time to do that. But I think once this is done and this is balanced, now we have people in the right spots, we're able to accomplish all of those goals and see everything come to fruition. That is all I have. I appreciate your time. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I have one question, Chief. Training on putting out electrical vehicles like a Tesla. Has your staff, you know, had that training?
In the region, no one has. We, amazingly enough, it was brought up at the Central Valley Fire Chiefs meeting that we host here in Kingsburg yesterday. We are bringing subject matter experts from outside the region with the monies that we have encumbered and putting that class on in the next six months was the goal. One of the things we're seeing right now are Tesla wall fires, the vehicles themselves can't be put out because they get into a runaway state. It's also one of the things to think about as a cautionary tale with EV bikes. The lithium-ion batteries have been problematic no matter where they are. Right now, it is at the top of the Fire Department of New York's number-one fire cause. Yeah, it's amazing to think that it surpassed everything else with unhoused fire causes, all that smoking, cooking. It's now the number-one cause of fires in the fire in New York City because there are so many EV bikes. And it's just a technology that hasn't caught up with safety measures. So no, in answer to your question, we have not. We do plan to and we know it's very important.
Any other questions?
I have a question and a comment. On the response time, is your goal to meet the national average or is your goal to surpass the national average?
Surpass.
Yeah, okay. And then I just had a comment for both Chief Dadian and Chief Perkins. I thought those presentations were very well-thought-out and it goes to, at the risk of being redundant, I've said it before, I'll say it again, the measure E money that you guys are getting, it shows that you guys are putting it to good use and I think that the taxpayers are getting a lot of bang for their buck, so to speak. And I appreciate that about you guys and I would just say you guys keep up the good work because it does, it does show in the community. I mean, without public safety, a lot of the other things in the community crumble. And so you guys are pillars and the departments, I think very highly of both departments and thank you for all that you do to keep all of us safe in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
No further questions?
Good job, yeah. Good presentation, thank you. Moving on. Counsel reports and staff communication, 7.1. Council reports and staff communication, seven point one. Community Service Commission met Thursday, last Thursday, uh, just a update on the dog park and a little bit talk about, uh, the final. Is it final already, Dave, or is there some more, uh, updating on the?
On the dog, on the dog?
Dog park, yes.
The, the concept plan is finalized, now we're just working on the construction drawings.
Construction, yeah, the final construction drawings, okay. They'll talk about that, and then that will come to community service and the council, right? Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, forbid it, so that. That's all we had there on community services. Um, public safety, we have not met, but I do have something on public safety, um. I spoke with a high school member, a staff member, last Thursday, and they are gonna have the fentanyl education and awareness there this month, the end of this month. So I had spoke with, uh, Officer Castaneda, I believe. From Fresno, um, and Smith Camp, and is it Castaneda? Cardinelli, thank you, Cardinelli, I'm back. Officer Cardinelli, and, uh, last year around this time, and the high school was like, well, we want to do it, but we've already had a, you know, a drug person come in and talk to the students, so, but I did find out Thursday that they're gonna have, uh, Smith Camp and Cardinelli be there this month. So that's, that was good news to hear on Thursday. So I'm gonna let our public safety community, they're gonna be very happy about that. We've been trying to get that over there for quite a while. Seven point three, commu, uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Um, we had a successful crayfish festival, um, thank you to the chamber for all their work. And, um, all the city staff that helped with all of that, too. Uh, October sixth, so this Friday night, is, um, a Kingsburg Street Eats in Memorial Park. And, um, it's also a home game, so they're helping, hoping that they'll get people to eat before they head into the game. And, um, we have a meeting this next Tuesday, so I'll get more information from that. But I do know, looking towards the end of the month on, um, Halloween, they'll have all the little trick-or-treaters that come downtown, um, to trick-or-treat at the businesses, you know, one of our hallmark town moments. So cute, so if you can come by, I don't know what the city staff is planning.
Toy Story.
Toy Story, okay. Maybe we can join and, um, be here, it's really fun. So, uh, that's all I have, and at our next meeting, I'll have more because our, our meeting's next week.
Thank you, Laura. Seven point four, economic development.
We have not met.
Seven point five, Finance Committee.
Have a comment.
Seven point six, Planning Commission has not met. Seven point seven, South Kings GSA.
Yeah, I, they did meet, and I was not able to attend, Brandon attended on, um, our behalf, and, um, they did close on the property for the recharge pond, so that was, um, going through. And so that's basically the gist of the meeting, so. That's it.
Now, is that, where's that, uh, pond going with them?
That's in Sanger.
Sanger? Okay, that's right, Sanger, thank you. Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
Um, we met, um, they met yesterday, and a lot of the conversation was around a lot of upcoming events that will be in November and December. They did talk about like holiday kickoff, and, um, they purchased all new trees, um, and then in the process of decorations and lights for all the corners downtown, and they're gonna, um, they would appreciate volunteers to help set that up because it was a, a few-person show to get that all done, if not one to two. And so they're, um, planning on really trying to help with that, and, uh, they talked at their meeting a lot about what they offer, um, the bid downtown, the business, business district for their money. And one of the big things they do is advertisement, so they have Oat and Oaks that is running social media, and any of the bid members can request for things to be, like, events to be posted on their social media, which can be shared out, or he also will come in and do, um, little videos or reels of their business and give the history. And I don't know if you follow any of their, um, social media, but he does a really good job. It's not just advertising businesses, he's really going into the history of Kingsburg. So, um, they just, they talked about that a little bit and what they have to offer, that's it.
Thank you. Seven point nine, Council of Governments.
A lot of discussions last week was about lobbying efforts in Washington, getting a group of COG members to go in the future for lobbying efforts. Um, other than that, at the transit meeting, they just talked more about ninety-nine and the construction disaster that we deal with on our way to Fresno. It's, it's gonna be like that for a while, so I wouldn't expect any relief anytime soon. That's it.
Thank you, Brandon. Seven point ten, Quarterly Council Update of all intergovernmental committees and boards. Anybody have anything?
We met, um, the five cities, uh, we met, uh, since the last quarter. There weren't a lot of new updates that I can think to mention. Uh, but we are hosting in the beginning of November here, the next meeting, um, which will be November sixth? I think, Abby? I think it's November sixth, we'll be hosting them here.
Here in Kingsburg? Thank you. Seven eleven, Council Member Reports.
I have another, um, I did go to the Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District meeting, which they changed their name to Kingsburg Healthcare District, which I left a flyer and a sticker in everybody's box, so you can see that. And Chief Perkins was there at that meeting, and he gave a great presentation on, um, you know, some of where that grant money has been used and, and what good things have come from it. And so, um, you know, the Healthcare District has been a great partner to the, to the city, and, um, so it was a very good, um, positive, um, meeting. So it was, it was good, so that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, now Council Member Reports. Anybody have anything?
I think just that we all went to Cal Cities, uh, all of us that could go went. I think it's an, it's an important training that, uh, for the public who doesn't know, it's kind of our opportunity to get our mandatory classes in that we have to, as well as network with our other elected officials, and just kind of see where other cities are going, and they address statewide topics at least, too.
Anybody else? I have one, uh, Dave and I went to the opening ceremonies today for the Fresno Fair. It was interesting, uh, Salquen, Fresno County Board Member Sal Quintero was the speaker, main speaker, and Chief Dyer went up and spoke, you know, some of the board members, fair, fair board members went up and smoke, spoke, and it was, it was nice, a little warm today, but we had some big fans on us, so that was nice. And the best part was, at the end, we got to eat fair food. I think it was free fair food, so it was great. Yeah. And that's all I have, uh, seven twelve, City Managers Report.
I just wanted to brief, brief item, just wanted to update the council on the, the curb ramp work that's occurring in front of, uh, Rayford Johnson, uh, that we talked about, uh, roughly a month ago, so, uh, the contractors out there, they are doing both of the curb ramp, the mid-block curb ramps, but they're doing them one at a time, just so that they can avoid disruption to, uh, to school activities. So I think the first one is, is poured today, and then they'll, they'll move on and continue with the second one as well. So I just wanted to update you all on that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Alex. Future Agenda Items, eight point one, Growth Management Ordinance Phasing Discussion Sponsor, Council Member Purcell Jr., Brandon Purcell Jr.
Uh, yeah, do we need to just make a motion to put that on?
Yeah, it's just more of a reminder, I think you guys have all agreed, um, that after the allocation period had ended, you wanted to talk a little bit about the phasing and the three-year rolling part of the ordinance, so, um, just a reminder about that.
A future agenda item? Okay, yeah. All right, sounds good. Okay, then. Yeah, future, now, okay, great. Next on the agenda is, I will adjourn this agenda, I will adjourn this meeting, thank you, all for coming.